A little bit of repeat from that presentation, just to make sure everybody gets the same information. But I'll also obviously be providing some updates because now you've applied, you've gotten approved for the assistance, and we're starting the project. And if you don't understand something at some point or question comes up that's relevant to the slide, just pipe up and ask me, and if it's something that you can save till the end, then go ahead and do that, too. There we go. Okay, so the outline of the presentation, and I don't know if I can get rid of that little thing up there. So I apologize for that.
I think that's the least of our worries.
Yeah, probably. Well, it says, I'll just say it says "presentation overview." So we're going to go over the project objective, a review of TGM principles, and that's a part that is mostly a repeat from last time. Talk about key issues, and then talk about the project status and next steps. So, project objective, this is a development code evaluation and update. That's the name of the project. So we're looking at just your development code. Well, that's not entirely true. We'll be looking at a lot of different, like your comprehensive plan, different plans and documents, but the bulk of the evaluation is your development code. And any amendments that we might make, for example, to your comprehensive plan, would just be to support what we're doing with the code. We're not overhauling your comprehensive plan. As much as you might want that to be part of this, it won't be. And this is a two-phased project. So the first phase is the one we're in now, and it's the evaluation phase. And at the end of that, we'll have an action plan that lays out what it is we're planning on doing for the second phase. And at that point, if you decide, eh, this isn't really for us, we can stop there, or if you're on board and want to continue, we can continue. So there'll be a check-in, basically. Well, we'll be checking in with you several times throughout the project, so you'll be consistently updated. But at the end of this phase, we'll have that final check-in where it's like green light, red light. Do we keep going, or do we not? A major project objective is to identify code barriers to smart development. So I will be getting into what smart development is in just a second. That is the kind of development that TGM promotes. And so we'll be looking at your code to see where it's preventing that from happening. We are also planning on updating the code to support city goals and the TGM mission. So sometimes, city goals are completely opposite from our mission. And then, when that happens, it's not a good fit for TGM to do a project. Sometimes, they are completely together, and everybody's super happy about everything. That's great. Usually, they're, they're close, and there's some overlap and some other areas where we might push you to think about doing other things that you weren't initially thinking about doing, and some of those things you might like, some of those things you might not like. And so at the end of the day, the result is a mix of things that TGM is thrilled about and some things that we're less thrilled about. But, but we do look at both of those things. So we, we're not, we absolutely take into account your goals, but we also have our own point of view, which I want to be very honest about from, from the beginning. And there are also some special areas of focus, which in the initial conversations, when your, the application was made, these were brought up during our discussions with city staff. And so these are called out in the project objective, as well as things that we'll specifically look at: housing variety and availability. And so with TGM, we think a lot about where is that housing? Are people living close to where they need to go? Is it easy for them to get around? Also fostering a thriving business community, especially in your downtown, which is already a thriving business community, but helping that become even better. Shade trees. This is a good day to talk about shade trees, that's for sure. This is a challenging environment for shade trees, but as, as our climate gets hotter and hotter, that's a way that we can make our cities more livable and make it more possible to walk around without being cooked. And then lodging. This is a very, this, I mean, I don't know of a town of this size that has as much lodging as you guys do. It's, it's amazing. It really is. And so we'll be discussing what, if anything, needs to be done about regulating potentially lodging so that there are also enough places for people to live who work here and need to live here. And again, these are just topics that we're going to be talking about. We don't have solutions at the moment. Okay, so let's take a little pause there. Any questions about the project objective? Maybe I should back up one. Yes?
So, I was on a Zoom meeting at 7:15:22, and it was OAPA with the, with the LCD, and they're talking, and this was for Deschues County.
Oh, okay.
And so they were talking like a bunch of this stuff, and the, your, your TGM somewhere along was brought up in it. I was just taking off some notes, and so. So, would this have anything to do where, like, the, the mother house would, you know, like the, how the size of housing where you could help adjust the, like, 200 square foot to a 900 square foot housing on a, on a, the same size of property, though, that's normally not counted out?
Oh, so are you asking about, like, an extra unit? An accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, and not just an extra unit, even the add-on type square footage, too. To our, I think, remember, Madras did something with their places also, where they did some, some type of a code thing to where, even though the size of the property is X amount of square acreage, but they allowed an extra couple hundred square foot of a home to be built, to help out with the housing issues.
Like, but a separate unit that someone would, yes, yes. And actually, TGM, we did that recent code project in Madras. So I definitely know about it. And it was, actually, it was focused on two things. It was focused on housing, and it was focused on parking downtown. And, and we made, I mean, they're really doing some great stuff there.
I know, they're happy.
Yeah. And so, yes, that is exactly what we're talking about with housing, really loosening up the rules so that there's just more flexibility. People can use their properties in ways that better meet their needs, and more people can live here and live close to where they need to be. Yeah. And multi, you know, even multi-generational households, where maybe you have, and, you know, your parents come and live, or, or children want to live for longer, but they want a separate unit, all of that. Or, in order to pay the mortgage, maybe you build an extra unit, and that helps you pay your bills. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, so let's talk a little bit about the TGM mission. All of our projects are oriented toward this. So the purpose of TGM is to link land use and transportation planning. So often, we talk about governments working in silos where they, you know, they do transportation planning, they do land use planning, they do environmental planning, or whatever it is, and they don't talk to each other. The purpose of this is to do it together, because as we know, how, where we live and where we do our business has everything to do about how we're able to get around. The purpose of the program is to expand transportation choices, and it's to create livable places where people can walk, bike, take transit, or drive where they want to go. And obviously, we know that different communities have different levels of transit, for example. You know, you have a very limited intercity transit, so there's nothing in town, but your town's so small that you probably don't really need it. You know, and, and for people to go to other towns, I think you have an option a few days a week.
You got to have the option.
Yeah, yeah. But the great thing about towns of your size is that they are amazing places to walk, and even with the hills, bike. It's just, you, you have a level of tranquility, aside from the highway. But even the highway isn't all that busy, that you, you just don't have elsewhere, and the distances are much shorter. So all TGM projects must have a transportation connection. That is a rule. Our money comes from the Federal Highway Administration. And so if we can't show that transportation connection, then we don't get our money anymore. But because we're talking about land use, so for example, housing. How is housing a transportation issue? Well, where people live determines how they can get around. So that's what's, that's what makes it a transportation issue. Projects also must have support from the city. So that's not, in this case, monetary support. There are other TGM projects that do ask for monetary support. In this case, it's just administrative support, support, organizing meetings, reviewing documents that are part of the project. Those are the requirements. And then the last requirement for the city is that you understand and support the TGM mission. And again, you know, when we get down to the details, there are often differences of opinion, but overall, if, if you support the goal of having a walkable city, then, then that meets that requirement. Okay, so code assistance is what this particular project is. And as I mentioned before, the purpose is to remove barriers to development that's consistent with TGM principles. So a lot of codes have rules that actually prevent the kind of development that helps create a walkable city. So, for example, they don't allow mixed use. Or they, you know, don't allow more housing units close to jobs and places where people shop. Those are barriers to smart development. And we base the work on smart development principles. I mentioned smart development principles earlier in the presentation. And these are the five smart development principles. And I'm going to go through each one and show you an example of what it is not, and then what it is. So, efficient use of land and energy. On the left, you can see, this is Florence on the left, and I believe that's a Fred Meyer, if I'm not mistaken, that big one with tons and tons of parking around it. And it's basically a strip, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Florence, but it's a strip that is in town, although it looks like it's outside of town because there's, there's only huge buildings with lots of parking and no housing around it at all. So nobody can walk these stores. Whereas on the right, this is Richland. And the road, not the very top road, but the next one down is their main street. And all the houses are just within spitting distance of the main street. They can all walk right down to Main Street. It's very compact. It's not spread out at all. So that is what we would consider an efficient use of land. The example, Richland, is preferable to the Florence example. Full utilization of urban services. So here you have an example, on the left is Sisters. And the yellow circle is where the town is. And then they've put their schools, like, it's the garbage dump, way on the outside of town, that no kid can walk to that. And not only that, but imagine all the utilities that they had to put out there. Sewer, water, electricity, transportation, that is extremely expensive. And, you know, maybe Sisters will grow and fill up that, that area, but this is not an example of, of using urban services well. On the right, you have the Dells. And in the center is the Dells High School. You can see, it's completely surrounded by houses. Lots of kids walk to school. It's got some mixed use. It's walkable. The library is right there. Down the hill is downtown. And so that's, that's a compact example, instead of this leapfrog development that, that sort of jumps over undeveloped land. This, so the other element is a mix of uses. So we don't want something like this, which is all houses and nothing else. Here we have, this is Gates, no, sorry, not Gates, Mill City. This is Mill City, Oregon. On the left, you have an old building that is a store on the bottom, actually, a couple. And up above, apartments. Or it could be also, and I actually see the international orders of Ogde Fellow sign on there. So probably they have their meeting rooms. But many communities, that group has disbanded or died out. So then those spaces can be converted to apartments, or offices, or what have you. But it doesn't always have to be, you know, a lot of small towns don't have two-story development. Many do, especially the older ones, even very small towns have, have two-story. But, but you don't have to have two-story development to have mixed use. You can have mixed use that's next to each other. And here's an example. On the right, that's a house. The next building down is a two-story building with stores on the bottom and a second story that's either houses, sorry, dwellings or offices. Further down on the right is another store, another house. And I don't know if you can see that little steeple right next to the fir tree, that's a church. So all of this area, whether it's in the same building or next to each other, it's just all mixed, and people are all close to where they need to go. So that's mix of uses. And then transportation options. Here are two different shots of Highway 97, one through Madras. And this is, the one on Madras is the example of what you don't want. And then a much, much nicer part of Highway 97 through Morrow. And you can see that there's room for people to walk, there's room for people to bike, there's room for people to drive. Even the big semi trucks that go on 97, they fit right in there. If you go onto Google Street View, you can see them driving down right through downtown Morrow. There are trees. So this is an example of a highway that's been designed to accommodate everybody, not like the one in Madras where it's really inhospitable to anybody who's not in a car. Yeah.
So is that something that, say, like, so our highway running through the, the speed limit is an issue, and there's residents and businesses on both sides. Would that be something that you folks should help maybe press, like, our speed limit issues, things like that?
So, unfortunately, and I wish I had a magic wand and could, and could do those things, this project can't do anything that will change highway operations. But I do want to hear problems like that so that I can communicate with the ODOT folks and see what can be done.
I've had conversations with them about reducing our speed. They did reduce it a few years back, but it wasn't, they reduced it from 55 to 45, where our intentions at the time was to get down to 30 or 35. There's other communities that are set up just like us, and the speed limit drops to 25, 30.
Yeah, and one of the difficulties with Mitchell is that you have a bypass. So your, your main downtown is a, is a business loop. And the highway is not, is not what Morrow is. So, so in Morrow, highway goes right smack through the middle of town. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't have your speed limit lowered. I do support that very strongly. And actually, quite a bit of your developable land is along the highway. And so, you know, do you want to develop that when people are zooming by at 45 miles an hour?
What land would you be talking about? Only because state of Oregon came through and did a, a study on places we could put housing, and they went all over Dodge, and when they got done, they said, we got it all covered.
So I would love to see that report. Do, do you guys have that? I don't think I have that now. Okay, because that would be really helpful for me. Yeah, I mean, you have, you do, you have a lot of constraints, for sure. But I did also see a lot of empty, empty space, you know. And I don't know, and I'm just saying, from what I've seen today, I don't know, for example, where your floodplain is exactly, or that sort of thing. But compared to the hillsides, just in terms of access, existing access. So, yes, so unfortunately, in this project, we don't have the power to change a speed limit or do a highway corridor overhaul plan. But again, I do want to know that that is something that you're interested in so that we can, I mean, those conversations go on for decades usually before anything happens. I mean, who knows how long Morrow talked about doing this streetscape project before it ever happened? I don't know. But yeah, that's helpful to know. And if anybody can find that study that you're referring to, that would be super, super helpful to see. Wait, Labor, like the wife of LBJ?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on, I think we have one more. So then the last one is a detailed human scale design. And this is really important when we're talking about zoning codes. A lot of trends include site standards for sites when you're developing a site. And these are two examples from Crescent. I don't know if any of you have been to Crescent. There's this new Dollar General, which if you are walking along the sidewalk, and if that's a pretty nice sidewalk, that'd be impressive, pretty good. You'd basically have to walk through the parking lot and across this planting strip to get into the store. Whereas the old Mohawk restaurant is, has its parking, still has parking, still has the same amount of parking, maybe more, but it's to the side. And so the building is actually closer to the sidewalk, and you just walk straight into the store. And somebody walking down the street, that's a lot more pedestrian-friendly, while still allowing people who ride in cars to have a place to sit.
So what you're saying is you prefer the Mohawk, you're just, for the one?
Correct, yeah. And we're not analyzing the architecture of the buildings or anything like that, or the, the style, I should say. Just the placement of the building, the how they, right, how they relate to people who are walking by. So, go to the, so not statement on Dollar General here. It's just a statement about the way that they tend to help different people. Okay, so, feedback. One thing that I wanted to be able to do during this meeting, and because of the staff upheavals that we've had, we didn't have the type of public management team that we were intended to have. And one of my goals for this trip here was to hear about some of the key issues related to the development code that you might know about and can fill me in on. And I say "related," and if you're not sure if it's related, so say something. Because there's something that we, there might be problems that need to be addressed, but in this project, you just can't because of the scope of our project and what we are able to look at. But if you know of anything related to the development code in terms of, you know, somebody's trying to do a development that would be great for the town, and they can't, or development code will cost them expensive. Right, oh, and I just want to be very clear that with the development code, it's just that it's the Mitchell development code. So if it's the building code, where, you know, they're telling you, you need, you know, windows of this size, and so many fogs, and exits, and all of that, read all of that. Right, so subject, so I will say, subject is related to the development code. We can't change what the subject rules are. But when we're talking about, for example, how big or small lots are, we have to think about subject. So you have to deal with subject, be some flexibility with how small lots are, this can be, or how many units to put on, depending on the, that it can return, so, you know. So you have to be aware of subject, but we can't change that.
And it's really easy to do with, it's a small, like, community. But, I have a big, this is a double-edged sword. How do we make the city more walkable? So, how is the, they don't know, what's the long-term stats on the state and the city? Yeah, we watch a lot of the life of the street, all that kind of stuff. The only place to make this page is the house, the building, the house. So that, I guess that's one.
That's a very valid concern and it comes up a lot of times in cities with a limited tax laws.
You add much to the neighborhood.
Right. So, you know, we have, there are resources for nice small communities that look at that conundrum of wanting to make things walkable but knowing you can't have sidewalk curbing gutter on every single street or it will break the bank. And so I'm glad you brought that up and we will continue that conversation because there's no perfect answer if you have all the materials covered. But you can try to figure out how to get the best solution given the knowledge and resources that there are. And if you don't have any now, that is totally fine. I will, on the last slide, my email address, and I will open to email at any time if you have a thought, you know, in the middle of the night and you're like, "Oh, I forgot to send that on, I forgot about that." And then we'll have several meetings tomorrow. And I'm sure that is a problem of the, you think about, you do have a road, but people who are walking don't have anything. And they're, and they're risking their lives walking in the street. Yeah, so I'm not saying that, that having smooth roads is important. And I just grew a bunch of rope today, so I know how they are. But, yeah, I mean, one thing that keeps the peace down, right? Yeah, and I know, and I don't know if you know the city plan, but, I mean, I know some cities. And I know that, you know, especially for roads or towns, there's some cities that are considered very dirty brown. And I don't know the point of saying that, so I don't know the, whether that saves money long-term or not. But I do know that some cities are.
Yeah, I know that's maybe true, because basically there's a number of wrongs down there, but.
Yeah, well, and I know this is a popular area for homeowners. So the connection between night skies and transportation is not I mean, it's there, it's there. But that is something that we can support. We definitely looked at that. We did a project for City Council where we put in some, not super strong, but some pretty good bright sky protections. There is a, I think it's called the Bright Sky, so International Bright Sky Association? Yeah, okay. And they have a lot of ordinance, but it involves quite a lot of pardon? Yeah, so it involves different zones, like where you can have brighter lights and less bright lights. It's, it's, it's kind of a lot more than everything. But we can take a look at that, we can take a look at some other more generic, not as tailored ordinances that just, you know, require shielding. You know, instead of people having the floodlights that actually, in a lot of places, need or problem that resolving. So, yes, I will write that down that there's an interest in that.
I think that's a big hurdle to the lighting. It was a dark shop, like our power cut off. It just now gotten, you know, back to get our light, get our streetlights changed up. Like, I think that recently, it wasn't available to one, but it's become available to, and about to, I mean, swap out all the lights and find this out.
Well, then this is the moment to do it because I know that when Salem swapped out, my neighborhood in the way, the lights got incredibly bright, but winky bright. And so, and they're not shielded. So the time to Yeah, yeah, it's interesting because, right, when the lights are shielded, they keep the light from going where it doesn't need to go. Probably just because it's heading to the sky. Okay, well, I do have that written down as something that. Okay, well, let's move on and type up if you have something that I forgot. But let's talk about the project status and the steps. So today, we had our community tour. We had kind of a, not exactly a project management team meeting, but we did talk amongst the project management team. The project management team was in me and city staff. So we and talk with city staff, but we did talk to your mayor. And we also had Dawn Burke, who's Department of Land Conservation Development representative for Mr. Norton. And so she was, she was there to talk. Go with you, man. And took a lot of notes. And then we have, right now, the city council presentation. And the next items coming up are a public involvement plan review. And that was supposed, that was not sent to you before this meeting, so I apologize for that not happening. But we will get that sent to you. And that is, basically, it's a very short document, it's only a couple pages. And it is, it lays out the plan for how we will do outreach during this project. So I wanted to send it to the council to just have input, like if we missed something, that's important. As far as a way to, to reach out to the public so everybody knows, talk project. Then that would be helpful. So I'm going to request, I'm going to, can you send that to the council? So. Perfect. So I will send that out and you can respond to me whichever way is more convenient. Whether you want to email me, comments, you can put them in the document or just state them in the email, or if you don't like email, you can call me on the phone. So I will have that sent out to you this week. Then there will be a draft evaluation memo. And so I'm going to review the code and other documents, like the comprehensive plan and draft up a memo, and then that will go out to you for input as well. And we'll have another city council meeting to talk about that memo. I'll most likely join by the same. I'd love to drive over. I actually do, I'm not joking, but I think a lot of time. I will be coming again though. You will also be having stakeholder interviews. I don't know when those will happen because you're, you're trying to organize those. So we will, I don't have any dates on here, unfortunately, because I decided with new staffing issues whatever dates we have, I don't know if I'll be able to get them. So I'm going to have to revise my calendar. But that's fine, not a problem. So we do have a list, like a B team of stakeholders that we're looking to hear from. So the city will identify the stakeholders, but we have some guidance. And it should, we wanted to include people of all ages, including some people whose primary mode of transportation is walking, biking, or transit. And the reason for that is that a lot of times on city councils and planning commissions and among the business owners, there are a lot of people who own cars, get around by car, and they're used to that. They don't, they don't know what life is like for people who are dependent on the bus or walking. And so we would provide to have that point of view available. Also, we, we wanted to have staff who's responsible for development review. Any transit agencies, which we know might not be based on, might serve people. Transit agencies, right. Business leaders, representatives of elder, elderly or low-income populations. And we also say that none of the stakeholders should be on state council. And the reason for that is because the purpose of interviewing stakeholders is to get different voices. And you guys are already, we're going to see you lots of times, so we'll, we'll already hear your voice. Yeah. Sure. So I was planning on coming here to do the interviews when we have the community meeting. And I'll probably be talking with your mayor to discuss who and, yeah, and he might, I don't know, he'll ask other people. But it's really the city's recommendation. I mean, I can't decide, I can, I can say, "Hey, I want some, I want to make sure we got people with these points of view or these experiences." But I don't know who those people are. Only you guys know who those people are. So I had expected, well, Krista was going to be giving me that, that list. But at this point, I don't, you'll have to figure out who will do that. Speaking of which, the community meeting, the virtual public workshop that I was hoping would be held sometime in September or early October. But we'll have to re-group and see when, when the, when the best time for that would be. And the community meeting would be an opportunity for the community to ask questions, for us to present what we found, our first ideas about what those two might look like. And the purpose of the virtual public workshop is to basically repeat, well, not repeat a community meeting, but to present the same material for people who put it, attend the community meeting. Just get on their computer, it'll be open for a couple weeks. But then I added this project website, Referees, because I know that there was talk about getting a website together, and I don't think that's probably happening, I think, actually. So now, and it's extremely useful to have a website where we can post our memos, anybody can access them. They can, you know, send you email wanting more information. We can put together a project email list where we can just shoot out information that's understood. So now I'm thinking that I might try to get this website up sooner than I thought and have something, just so we can have a website for the project. And then it would have the interactive element later. Kind of a learning curve for me because I haven't been to the program very much. But I have a few times when to be. So those are the next steps. The last questions or comments? And there's my contact information there. That is my mobile phone, which is my only phone, so I'm the one who answers that. I mean, it's, it's my work phone, not my personal phone, but it's not, it's not, you know, you don't have to toggle between desks against your cell phone. Yeah, so that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any other questions. If not, If you don't. Communicate with your folks.